I get six thirty.
No?
I got six thirty.
Okay, so do I. Are you CNET ready? Okay. We're gonna start the work session now with Panone Associates. Jason, would you like to do the presentation and we'll move aside?
Sure.
I got, everything's up on the screen, so we'll step through this. I guess I'll introduce myself for the members on committee that haven't gotten to know me yet. My name's Jason Stimmel. I'm a senior engineer with Panone Associates and a project engineer as well. And we've gone under contract here with Belfont to help you take a look at the safety issues and concerns you have at the Allegheny Street and High Street intersection. We've had several subcommittee meetings with Streets to discuss the issues at hand, some of the previous work that had been done through LTAP requests. And we've pulled all that in. And there's been a process here where we've gotten to the point where you have a temporary set of measures that are getting ready to be deployed. And HOP has been acquired from Pendott. And as that is getting ready to go out, we started to take a look at conceptually what may be done at this intersection. And tonight, I'm going to show two options that had the blessings from Street Committee. And we'll step through those now. What you see on screen right now is essentially taking the temporary measures that are gonna go out here and making them permanent. So if you take a look at what's on screen, you'll notice that the parking that is within that intersection area has been eliminated. And we're extending the curb out and around. And I call this the bobout option. It's basically doing curb bobouts to help decrease and minimize the amount of space that pedestrians have to cross through this intersection. Because it is a very wide intersection, spread out because of the High Street configuration. The other part of this is permanently relocating the one crosswalk that is where I think that a lot of problems occur. You'll notice that is relocated further to the west on High Street, adjacent to the driveway for the YMCA. That is part, the idea would be to get as much space from the main intersection to give drivers a little bit more heads up about that crosswalk and increase its visualization. Again, there's bobouts there. So we're pulling that pedestrian crossing out. Pedestrians will be more visible and adding the signage. You'll see that there, a lot of this adds the additional pedestrian crossing signage. With this as an option, it has been discussed whether or not you would want to keep the crossing that goes to the mid-block island, the Y section there in the middle of the intersection. We're showing it as being retained for now. But again, if you start to take a look at pedestrian behavior and when it decides something like that wants to go away, it can be. But as it stands now, it stays. And that is basically the real genesis of this, of this option one. Okay? Pretty much keeping it as a two-way stop control intersection. We're not changing vehicle capacity in any manner. We're not changing anything relating to how vehicles operate through the intersection. We're just simply creating more green space using these bobouts, reducing the pedestrian crossing width, adding the signage. Again, this is really driven for pedestrian safety. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that- The, in addition to shortening the crosswalks, the other purpose of the bobouts is, is to narrow the road a little bit so that, so that traffic naturally slows down. And I feel like that's maybe like the most important part of the bobout besides making, you know, people have less far to cross, but, but traffic's gonna naturally slow because the, because the road is narrower in that spot.
You're correct. It's, it's a common, it's in our toolbox of options, it's a, it's a common use for, for traffic calming. So, and thank you. That was another discussion point the committee was about slowing vehicle speeds down, especially the right-hand movement from Allegheny Street to High Street. That was identified as a high-speed maneuver and one that causes conflict. So again, as correctly stated, doing the bobouts will naturally cause traffic to slow down because you're visually reducing the amount of pavement width there. And it also serves the purpose to bring more visibility to pedestrians crossing. So the big option was to take a look at a roundabout. And it was provided to us that there had been a prior look at a roundabout design. We reinvestigated it using all of Pendott's latest and Federal Highway's latest design standards and criteria for urban roundabouts. And we ran this with designed vehicle templates, which I can talk about here in a minute. This pedestrian, this is your, pretty much your standard roundabout. Now, you, an ego eye will note that a drawback, I wouldn't say a drawback, it's a condition of the roundabout, is that the one-way pairs of High Street adjacent to the courthouse would become effectively a right-in and a right-out movement. They cannot be accommodated within, with full access into the roundabout due to the limitations designed in the spacing we're dealing with. But again, this was discussed within the Street Committee. So what you're seeing is the right-in and the right-out on High Street. And the rest of the movements work with traditional roundabout approach. Benefit here is you are substantially reducing the number of conflicts that a pedestrian would encounter. They can effectively cross one lane each time to cross any of the side, the streets that they're looking to navigate. Now, I will state also with this, again, in concept, and this was another issue discussed within Streets, the two pedestrian crossings of Allegheny Street as they are now, the one is still aligned with the pizza shop. And you'll, it comes to the corner where it essentially meets today. And the same on the opposite side, it comes and joins in up by the Comfort Jewelry Store. It may be more preferable to get to the traditional treatments for pedestrians on a roundabout to actually reverse that and have them cross to the courthouse to the center of that intersection. Because then a pedestrian would only be dealing with crossing Allegheny Street's traffic and not having any impact or have any issues with traffic entering or exiting from the two, one-way pairs of High Street. So you could kind of see how we could, you can shift that in quite easily because we're gaining a lot of green space off the corners of the, adjacent to the monument there for the courthouse. So again, we took a look at this basically in 2D using designed vehicle templates. I will say that we have not, and we don't have the survey or did not look at this in a 3D perspective with the grading. So I just thought I'd mention that. We did not go any further than looking at this with, in terms of impacts to drainage. Although, we anticipate that it would be minor for both options. Drainage would be able to be accommodated pretty readily. All right. In terms of the designed vehicle templates that I wanted to walk through, just so you understand, that center part of a roundabout traditionally can be two components. It can be what's called the apron, which is traversable area. And can also have a, an area that's non-traversable, that's plantable, or landscaped, or however you'd want to have that treatment done. Town of Lingustown has a flag in theirs, for instance. However, the reason why nothing is shown in concept is because again, going into preliminary engineering, you would want to go through a process of data collection with identifying traffic that's utilizing this intersection now and today and have discussions with Pendott to firmly identify designed vehicle. So what I'm going to show is, if you guys can see it, let me get to that one right there. This, I apologize, it's actually kind of hard to see. But if you look, if you can see the crisscrossing lines through the circle, what I am showing on screen is your typical interstate tractor trailer WB62 wheelbase making the left turn from Allegheny Street to High Street and then also the High Street left turn to Allegheny Street. That's your worst-case condition. And you'll notice that it severely impacts how much of the area of that roundabout would be non, would have to remain as being mountable. Essentially, in all likelihood, if Pendott said you have to design this for tractor-trailer trucks, you'd have basically a mountable island through there. You could do stamped pavement or whatever you want to do, but it would have to remain mostly mountable. So the next one, let me see if I get that, is the next option. This is your city bus, a catibus making the turn. You can see that the roundabout pretty much fully encompasses and accommodates the bus. And the same goes with a single-unit truck, which is this picture here, which would be like your FedEx or UPS truck. So again, this emphasizes the importance of getting concurrents or working with Pendott on acceptable design vehicle. As you can see, that has an impact on what you'd have for the roundabout itself in the middle. But the design as it stands now accommodates all design vehicles. In terms of cost, I think that's a relative question to ask. We did provide some ballpark numbers. Again, this would be for the intent of doing a grant, if you wanted to go after grant money to help with construction of either of these. A roundabout, conservatively, if you put a grant in for about a million for construction, that's probably high. A lot of our design experience, they range, something like this ranges around 500 to 600,000, but put in for a million on the grant side. With design costs, about 250,000. For the first option, it's less in terms of cost and design and construction, so you're probably around 400,000 max. That's including fees for design. And again, that's shooting high, assuming that we might have some utility conflicts addressed or stormwater. And we know that there are some inlets impacted, but that's where we're at with the ballpark numbers. And in terms of addressing the safety, I think both of these are fairly valid options to help achieve the improvements you're trying to make, both to slow down traffic and also make this a more friendly environment for pedestrians. So with that, I'll stop talking and I'll open up to other questions. Who comes in?
Does a roundabout serve to slow traffic or speed traffic?
It would significantly slow traffic down. That is a stated benefit of a roundabout.
Roundabout calls that calming, I believe, don't they? Calming traffic?
Yeah, it is calming traffic. It's part, again, it does, it does appear in Pendott's traffic calming book of common measures for, for going traffic calming measures, yes. Kind of broken record there.
I would just, I just want to say, I was through the one in Patton or on Bull Gatesburg Road today. And of course, there's no traffic out there at all because nobody travels that way. I don't think because of that, I don't know. That does, if I remember, they put it in because they didn't want anybody, a straight stretch or anybody speeding up through there. And I believe that's the reason they put that on, if I remember, anyway.
Yep, it does that effect. I can tell you, I grew up down in Harrisburg, Lingustown Road, the town of Lingustown. They were one of the first adopters municipalities that actually put a roundabout in on a major Pendott route.
It's a four-way intersection, isn't it?
It is, a four-way intersection, but it, the, there's, the Lingustown itself and Mountain Road coming, that's your heaviest.
If I remember, that's, they have a pretty wide area between-
It is, it is. And then they worked with Pendott and they got it posted for Truck E-Tour. They have a truck route that avoids downtown, that core area. And that was part of what they also wanted because they wanted to street scape and improve. And in fact, a lot of the literature that Pendott now publishes shows that, that roundabout is like their, as their case study photo essentially of a successful urban roundabout installation. So it is done. It's been, it's now increasing in frequency all across Pennsylvania. A lot of municipalities are looking at the roundabout. Yes?
When you were, when, the response to the question about slowing down or speeding up the traffic, is there any, can you state anything about the traffic flow through the whole, the whole intersection when you have the roundabout versus the multi-intersections, multi-turn intersections of the current configuration?
In terms of like the amount of conflicts that occur?
Yes.
Well, yeah, so this configuration has far more conflicts for pedestrian to be aware of as they, and for motorists to also be aware of as they navigate this intersection. The, the benefit of a roundabout is you're effectively, any approach for motorists to this intersection, they only have to really, they have to watch just one specific lane they're crossing because you're providing havens or areas for a pedestrian. They only have to cross one lane and then you'll notice that what the roundabout in those median spaces that are created gives them a location to pause and wait if they need to, instead of a direct crossing. So that is, I hope I'm answering your question. That is one of the stated benefits of a roundabout is reduction in the amount of conflict points to an intersection, to pedestrians and motorists and motors. Yes.
Yes. With the roundabout design, you're really restricting access to and from High Street on either side of the courthouse.
Correct.
How is that really going to affect traffic patterns? If somebody comes up High Street and they want to go up the south side of the courthouse, how do they get there? If it's only a right-in, you're going to be driving traffic going into the courthouse or out of the courthouse into adjacent neighborhoods to access those right-in and right-out.
Yeah, that, that was something that was brought up in Streets Committee. They said that is a stated, I don't want to say a pro or a con, but that's part of this design option. We had his, some traffic data provided to us from, by Pendott. It was pre-COVID 2018 data. And it didn't actually show in the AM and the PM, peak hour data that we provided. Again, that's just a very limited snapshot. It wasn't a significant amount of movements that were trying to go straight through, which is the hardest movement, I would argue, to make through this existing intersection. Trying to go straight through Alle, High Street through the intersection on either approach.
We did, during our discussion, we, there was a traffic count reported at the maximum time was 41 cars traveling west down High Street.
Yeah.
And that was at the dismissal of county employees time.
A lot are making the right turn movement essentially, already.
And, and they were already making a right turn. And, and if you look at, at the other design, cutting straight across Allegheny down High is much more dangerous than the impact of the right turn only. Meaning that the safety benefits are much greater having only the right turn than people trying to scoot across Allegheny Street that currently exists.
Right.
So that was why we, as a committee, we thought that when you look at, at the big picture, our first thought was safety and, and that's our priority. So we tried to say, also look at how that might beautify the center of town with the green space added and the slight inconvenience of those two right turn only legs of the roundabout because of not so much used traffic. So courthouse, courthouse employees would turn right and go down Allegheny Street, most likely turn left onto Howard and either go left on Spring or right on Spring down to Lamb Street where there's another light where they could get onto Water Street.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is you're driving the traffic into adjacent neighborhoods where you're going to increase traffic on Howard or on Bishop. And there are residents, residential units on both sides of the courthouse that need to be accessed.
Well, they're one-way now, so I don't see how it makes a difference.
I think with, there's other streets that people can use, and that's what we talked about at our meeting as well. You know, if you're coming into town now, I think most people are coming up Bishop Street and would turn left on Allegheny to go to the courthouse. And they'd still be able to do that. You just, it's the High Street version that causes problems. But I really don't know how many people that are going to the courthouse actually come up High Street to cross there. I think if most people who are, you know, at the, whether they're employees or, you know, they, they would know that Bishop Street would be their best option to get to the courthouse if they're parking on the hill.
Okay.
And it might, you know, it might require some additional signage for people who don't come in regularly as far as, you know, where the roundabout, you know, roundabout head, if you're going, going High Street, you know, it just has an arrow going to Bishop or Howard, the signage would have to be made. There's other ways for people to get around town and I think, I think they would figure it out pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
I personally think roundabouts are very confusing, especially for older drivers. I know this is, it's all about being pedestrian-friendly, but even, even if you look at the new roundabout where we get on 322 from 144. Every time I go over there, it's like, where am I going? And it, that is, that to me is a dangerous one because there's another road when you want to turn on 322, there's actually a road that comes out from Sand Mountain or wherever it is, comes down and there's traffic coming this way actually, which you don't know until you make that turn. I mean, I haven't been to any close ones, but I made the turn and right there's a car coming down. I thought it was one-way going up because the paint, lines aren't painted very good there. But I, I don't know, I just, to me, that would be so confusing for anybody coming to town. I don't know why I'd want to do that, to be honest with you, just personally. It's just, and to me, and you talk about downtown, that diamond thing down there, I think I've got postcards going back to early 1900s that show that. And, and if you want a nice picture for town, where do you stand? You stand on the diamond or you take a picture of the courthouse or whatever. And aesthetically, I think this would be terrible for town, my own personal opinion. And I've, I've talked to, I've had a bunch of other people call me or write me and say that when they heard about this, they, everybody's against it. I had about two people, I have 136 comments that were for it and everybody else said, please don't do this. So, just information.
Again, the committee was looking, and we understood that and we discussed that part of what the change would be. But we, we decided to have options. You know, if the first drawing that we saw works, then maybe we just go ahead, if it works, it works and we continue with it. There's, you know, with the roundabout, then we're talking about more traffic moving freely than, than it does maybe in this design. Because, you know, we can't do stop signs, Pendott won't let us do stop signs. We might be able to do yield signs and those will probably be there for the roundabout, I believe is what we talked about the last meeting. So, you know, we wanted to offer options to residents and understand people being against it. I wasn't crazy about the idea in the beginning, but I can see where, where it would work. But again, I agree with the aesthetics part as well. You know, if it's a good look for Belfont or not, I think that's up to the residents to decide.
The other thing I just want to mention and look at here, there's another, a dozen new signs, it looks like we'd go with the roundabout there. And I know years ago, we talked about beautifying downtown and the thing was, we went to Pendott and asked them, how many signs could we take down? Now we're looking at another dozen signs of that particular design, which doesn't help either, I don't think.
Yeah, pros and cons will have to be figured out.
I think in terms of aesthetics, if, if we have to have the whole thing be traversable, I think that that really affects what we can do aesthetically. Like if it can be, if we can have, you know, some nice, you know, a statue or fountain or a, you know, whatever, something lovely in the middle of it, it could be, it could be very nice. But if it has to be all, you know, if it has to be traversable, then that, that limits what we can do aesthetically to make that area nicer.
When we talked about aesthetics, I think the, probably the best one was the fountain thought, the idea about putting a fountain in.
Yeah, that was what you, was that your son?
That was my coworker, Al, yeah. Al's daughter mentioned that, yes.
Oh, right, right.
Because of the reference to the term, the name Belfont itself, so.
If you put a fountain or another visual obstruction in there, then that's where you make it more challenging for the driver.
Right.
Because now you've introduced a visual barrier.
True.
So, you know, I would suggest we look at Hamburg, New York, and Oleand, New York. New York State's been quite aggressive in their older towns adopting these roundabouts so as to improve the traffic flow through those towns, eliminate traffic lights. I mean, I think it's, traffic lights is about 350,000. I think the other option, the-
Go back to option one?
Sure.
If we did option one, that's about the price of a traffic light. So, you know, you're, you, this might be new and different for some people in central Pennsylvania, but it's not different for the rest of the country. And we, at some point in time, you have to look at beyond just ourselves and beyond just what people saw 40, 50 years ago and think about maybe what might be better for the future of the town.
Again, that's, that's why we need to have the public meetings. We put these proposals side by side. You know, when you look at, for me, if I look at that, that's the cleaner look right there. It's cleaner than a roundabout. It works, it works the same way it works now.
I understand you, Randy, and I think you're correct in that regard. However, I would like to reduce those potential conflicts between the pedestrians and motors. So I think, you know, the, the traffic circle concept had merit from that standpoint. But it is more of a change, I give you that.
Yes.
Is there any way, I'm looking for a compromise here because Facebook is a cesspool and I can't stand to look at those comments anymore. People are insane. Like the vitriol is at a level that I don't think is healthy for this community over this. So, is there a compromise that we can have that maybe gets one of the side parking spaces back open but includes bump outs? Like I personally have almost gotten into several accidents in front of the park, the YMCA side with people backing in to those spots. So like if we still deleted the parking spots on the Rodbeard side of the Diamond, but included the ones on-
This side.
On the, yeah, on the State Burger side, but somehow did bump outs, is that a compromise that would slow traffic and increase safety? I know it's not one that's specifically presented here, but is, is it one thing that the committee considered?
Well, that's why we wanted to have the public meetings because we would take that type of input, you know, from the residents. We're just trying to show what it would look like if you took both sides. And that's the decision we made, kind of somewhere in the middle of all these discussions about having, what do you call them, a parquet type of thing? And, I mean, it, it sounds good when you have restaurants nearby and you want to grab something and you can go and sit or stand at a table somewhere outside instead of eating inside. Gives people other options for that. And that, that's kind of where that discussion came.
I will also, I'll add real quick, I don't even interrupt, but in terms of this option, remember this is going to go out right now here in August as a temporary measure. So for anybody that's uncertain about, undecided about the impacts of the loss of that, those few parking spaces versus the trade-off on, on gaining some usable sitting space or green space, you're gonna gotta get a feel for that.
Yeah.
Once this gets set up. So in, in one way, you're gonna have a test of this one to see how it gets accepted.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the effort and the- Yeah, I, I appreciate the effort and the work that the committee put into this. It's a lot more than I think what the general public sees ever. The amount of meetings that takes away from your time of your real jobs or other committees that you're on. And I do believe in increasing the walkability, especially for visitors from out of town, because if you're just walking around and looking at buildings, this is what you want. But I also understand the needs of our business community as a business owner, wanting people to be able to park somewhere in the general area of the build, of where you're at. And with the roundabout specifically taking away access of large trucks being able to deliver goods to businesses in the downtown, as much as, as like a resident of this community, I never want to see a truck, a tractor trailer in our downtown, especially if, when I live downtown and having to listen to them unload in the morning. I think that it would create more pressure on those businesses that have no other way to get goods to their establishment. So, I'm always of the mind of how can we get as many people both equally happy and unhappy at the same time? So, I would appreciate, I appreciate the willingness of this committee to look at other options and think about all the perspectives.
And I will say, I think some of the iterations we went through with, with the Streets Committee, we did look at one that had, I think, two, if I'm trying to remember, anybody else in the Streets Committee? I think we looked at one that had two spaces retained, and as, instead of pulling in and perpendicular to the curb, they were at an angle, 45-degree angle, and there were two spaces retained there.
That was on the lower space.
In the lower space, yes, but the, for the pizza shop corner there, but.
Since I've been on the Streets Committee, I've, my wife and I have both done a weekly or at least three times a week, drive through the town at different times of the day, different days of the week. And not one time did I drive through the town that we didn't see at least a half a dozen, at least a half a dozen parking spaces available. And those spaces were close enough to businesses that were probably closer than the further spade at Wal, space at Walmart or the State College YMCA. So, when we get these letters that there's no parking in downtown Belfont, I can't quantify that on, on my own personal survey of the town. We came through Sunday morning at 11:30, I know it was Sunday, traveling east on High Street, and there was one car parked on the left-hand side in front of the YMCA. I know it was 11:30. The busiest day is, of course, Wednesday, court day, and it is very difficult to find a parking space at that time. But we have three, one, two, three community lots that aren't any more than two blocks from most businesses in the town. And I, I realize that's a hardship for some people, but the claim of, of these parking spaces disappearing hasn't... I have not seen that in my personal survey of the town in the last month.
Right down in South Allegheny Street, there's one, two, three, four, five, six meters bagged, bagged right now. And then on Spring Street, there's three more bagged.
Those are temporary.
Well, that's all right. It's still, it eliminates parking.
Well, we're, we're trying to encourage businesses for remodeling.
You take away permanent parking, and then you add on the bagged meters on top of that.
Temporary inconvenience for permanent improvement.
Yeah.
We're going to have to wrap this up.
Yeah, all right, well, there's going to be more discussion on this, I'm sure.
We will be having, during this, the council session this evening, we will be having a motion about whether to have one or two public hearings on this issue sometime in September. So think about what it is you want to do and get to that point in the agenda.
Just, I just say one more thing. With your two options you have here, I think you still need to consider the third option, is do nothing up there.
Yeah.
And the other thing, I, I talked to a guy from Texas today, has this flashing pedestrian lights that they produce. And I, and I understand they're approved by PennDOT. He was supposed to get back to me tonight and let me know what our estimate of cost was. It's still, well, I didn't hear back from him yet. But anyway, I think there's other options besides spending a lot of money and changing the whole downtown Diamond dare that we could look at before we go ahead and make a major decision on this. At least, at least let the public know that that's an option.
Again, in this, we'll go.
Yeah, we need to, we need to move on to where we can have this conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
I should talk to my.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next presentation is by Paul Takak. He's the, on the college township board supervisors and is the vice chair for the Spring Creek Watershed Commission.
What do I hit play here? I'm not sure. Give me a second.
Yeah, we'll change this here for you.
Oh, there it is. It's up.
Yeah, I know, we'll hide it from you just so you can have.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, what happened? There we go.
Thanks. Thank you all very much for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. As Joanne said, my name's Paul Takak. I'm a member of College Township Council. So, good opportunity to say hello to those of you who I haven't met before or served with. I know most of my colleagues in the center region, but not everyone in the other municipalities. So this is a great opportunity for me. The goal of my presentation is to provide a very brief history of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission and its work, to provide a brief update and synopsis of the recently completed Phase Two report, and to outline our future plans in order to gather your comments and feedback, and we hope your endorsement to move forward. But before we go on, briefly, what is a One Water Plan? It's an innovative and collaborative approach to water resource management whereby municipalities can work together in order to maximize benefits, reduce redundancy, and save money. The long-term benefits of such an approach include not only a reliable, high-quality water supply and a healthy, sustainable ecosystem, but also enhanced economic and environmental, recreational opportunities that benefit everyone in the watershed. So with that, let's proceed with a brief history of the commission and their efforts to lay the foundation for just such a plan for the Spring Creek Watershed, why it is needed, who will benefit, and what is necessary in order to move forward and make that a reality. The Spring Creek Watershed covers approximately 175 square miles, has a total population of over 130,000 people, and is highly developed along much of its length. The area is underlaid by karst geology, which supports a huge aquifer system that provides the majority of the water, as you know, with the spring right here. But ultimately, that water really comes from the sky. It's a finite resource. The Spring Creek Watershed Commission was founded in 1996 to help develop a vision and a plan for the watershed's future. The membership of the commission consists of elected officials and representatives from 12 of the 14 municipalities in the watershed. This work is also supported by over 30 other stakeholders, including Clearwater Conservancy, Trout Unlimited, and other nonprofits and community organizations, as well as water and wastewater authorities, local businesses, and county, regional, and state agencies. Oh, I actually, there you go. Those are the 12 municipalities, and you can see those if they're not. Good to know that my animations work. The mission statement of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission can be summarized in three words: vision, leadership, and planning. Specifically, the founding mission was to establish a long-term consensus vision for the watershed and to take a leadership role in developing a comprehensive, long-term watershed management plan to advance that vision and to help guide future projects and programs on behalf of the member municipalities. In 2003, the commission published a Phase One report to help guide development of the watershed and to thoroughly analyze the overall environment, including the impact of population growth and land development. This Phase One effort had two primary objectives. The first was to develop a comprehensive matrix of the problems and challenges facing the watershed, along with potential solutions and future areas of research. The second was to identify and organize information on the watershed, particularly in regard to surface and groundwater, the water supply, and land use. In addition, the report also began the process of compiling and researching other watershed reports and plans in order to help guide future efforts. Unfortunately, however, after this first report was completed, further progress stalled due to a lack of funds. Nearly 15 years later, and thanks in large part to renewed leadership, the commission started work on Phase Two of the watershed plan. Roughly $16,000 in funding to support this effort was provided by local municipalities and authorities, as well as by Penn State, nonprofits, and local businesses. This funding provided administrative support, including the hiring of a project facilitator. A work group was formed and developed additional background material and information. They held several public forums and presentations to gather input from the community. This effort highlighted several key issues and concerns. The first was that population growth and land development was not only continuing, but accelerating. Secondly, the lack of a comprehensive plan to identify and prioritize challenges, opportunities, and solutions greatly increased the risk that water resources may become insufficient to meet the future needs of our community and of the ecosystem. That is, of course, complicated by the fact that dozens of entities are responsible for making decisions about land and water. All of this and more clearly underscored the need for a more collaborative and cooperative approach. However, it also became abundantly clear that what was not needed is another bureaucratic or regulatory layer, but rather the development of robust partnerships between all stakeholders, including the public. The resulting Phase Two report was approved by the Watershed Commission in December of 2019. It's available on the website, and I can send email follow-up links for your convenience if you like. The key findings of this report are captured in a revised, forward-looking vision statement. The vision for the Spring Creek Watershed is integrated collaborative management of water resources in an environmentally, economically, and socially beneficial manner. This vision emphasizes long-term resilience, reliability, and economic prosperity, as well as the importance of community and stakeholder involvement, but not more regulation or any effort to change local governance. Instead, improved communication and coordination is expected to lead to significant benefits, including considerable savings by reducing duplication of effort and improving both efficiency and effectiveness. Such cooperation can also be expected to help in securing outside funding and grants. The report emphasizes that in order to make all this happen, a Phase Three planning effort was needed in order to develop a comprehensive roadmap for integrated water resource planning in the Spring Creek Watershed. So with a long-term One Water Plan as our goal, what are the next steps? Basically, there are two. The first is to get consensus approval from a majority of the participating municipalities that the commission should move forward with this Phase Three effort. We hope this presentation, while however brief, sufficiently describes the goals and benefits of such an undertaking. However, it is important to emphasize that such authorization does not require or imply any funding commitment. As stated in the founding agreement, ongoing support of any commission project is strictly voluntary on the part of each municipality. Upon approval, the Spring Creek Watershed Commission will then move on to Step Two, which is to appoint a Phase Three working group to guide the next phase of this project. The Phase Three work group will be tasked with the following: to prepare a preliminary project plan and outline, to develop a realistic budget and pursue funding, particularly in light of the current challenges posed by the pandemic. It's estimated that the initial budget may be in the range of $35,000 to $45,000, but as the project develops, that could increase. It is expected, however, that much of this funding will be from outside agencies, authorities, and organizations, as well as any municipalities that are interested in contributing. As soon as feasible, the working group would then assist in contracting a project director and hopefully support staff. Additional responsibilities would include researching other One Water Plans, engaging local, regional, and statewide stakeholders and the public, and providing regular progress reports and presentations to the commission, to member municipalities, and to the public. Finally, the working group would then help direct the production of a Phase Three One Water Plan report for consideration by the member municipalities. These efforts will, of course, be continuously monitored by the Watershed Commission and by the municipalities. The process will be open, transparent, and inclusive. But most importantly, the focus will be collaborative rather than regulatory. In conclusion, a comprehensive One Water Plan for the Spring Creek Watershed will provide a strategic vision and framework to maintain economic and environmental prosperity and a high quality of life over the long term. Improvements in communication and collaboration are expected to lead to not only improved outcomes, but to considerable savings. But perhaps most importantly, this process will help build a greater sense of community and confidence in our collective future. We ask you to support this effort and consider approval of the non-binding resolution provided as part of the meeting packet. Thank you.
Paul?
Done.
Can I, do you have a cursor there?
That's an excellent question. I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Would you like me to go back to a particular slide?
No, no, this one's fine.
Okay.
I, I guess when, my, my opinion on the One, One Water Plan is based on the fact that at the southwest corner of that map up there, that line is, that loops around out there, that's just white? That's where the water in Big Spring comes from. That is the recharge area.
That, the dotted line as a whole would be that area, correct?
I'll be the pointer.
Yeah.
Yeah, does that help?
No, go up, go up to the first slide. Yeah, thank you, Paul.
This area is what he's talking about.
That is the recharge area for Big Spring. Okay. Any municipality northeast of that or person that owns property can sink a well to 700 feet and drink Spring Creek water, or Big Spring water before it ever percolates through the karst to the Big Spring. So, in that area of the center region is growing. So, if we participate in a plan, we might be able to protect the recharge area that is the source for the Big Spring. If we don't participate in a plan, which my understanding is most of the communities in the center region have...
Would you mind if I put up the map of the municipalities? I can show you which ones.
Have joined?
Have joined already, have endorsed this plan. You can see the, the seven, I guess, on the bottom? The ones on the left that you're talking about, Ferguson and Half Moon encompass that area, that recharge zone you were talking about. They've both passed the resolution in support. Patton Township, College, and Harris. So, the ring around State College. The reason we haven't presented to State College is we haven't gotten on their agenda yet, but we would expect them to pass it as well. So basically, you're right. All of the upstream municipalities that we've presented to so far have endorsed this Phase Three effort.
In our recharge area. I'm not talking about Spring Creek, I'm talking about Big Spring.
Correct.
So they can drink all of our water before it ever percolates to Belfont.
I don't think you can call it our water. Comes out of our pipes, to be honest with you.
I'm talking about where our water comes from.
Everybody, yeah, it is, but not all of it comes from right there. We had a study done.
Well, everybody before Belfont can sink a well to 700 feet and drink your water. So there's nothing coming out of Big Spring eventually.
It belongs to everybody upstream from us. We're the last ones on the straw here. Because all the, all the rocks come down this way to Belfont. When you get to the gap over here, the rocks go this way. So that's why we have the Big Spring out here. Anyway, when we had Dr. Parsak do studies on the Big Spring before we covered it, some of our water comes from under the mountain on the other side of the Bald Eagle Mountain. And, and it's not just a resource, up on Half Moon Township knows. He, he told us that some of that water comes from on the other side of the mountain, underneath the mountain. Now, I, I don't know where that report is, but I probably have it home someplace from 30 years ago or whatever. But I, I agree with you. Anybody can drill, drill a well up there. It's, it's, in 200 and what, 200-some years since we've had the spring here, you know from our records, we've never run a day drop of water. Where 15 to 19 million gallons a day come out of that. As a matter of fact, when they put the, all the concrete around the spring, we increased the capacity about 2 million gallons a day that we were losing just filtering out from the spring. So, anyway.
Sorry, consumptive use, buddy.
30 years ago, when that report was done, there wasn't near, there was farms out there.
No, no, I agree, I agree 100%.
I think that's John's point, is that that is where the population is growing the fastest. And I'm assuming this is towards your point. That is where the population in the, in this watershed is growing the fastest. So if we want a voice in determining how water is managed, this may be a good way to have a voice in. to have a voice in this.
My memory's not good right now, but I can remember we had some kind of agreement with the townships up there, and as a matter of fact, State College Water Authority, on areas that shouldn't be developed in the future because of that water recharge area. Now, again, I can't tell you 100% whether, do you remember that, Ralph, at all?
I do.
Many years ago.
It would make sense to me that there's some sort of regulation because we're only allowed to-
Withdraw five million maximum.
Right now, yes.
And I would think that the feds would step in with some sort of regulation.
Well, we're under the Chesapeake Bay.
That would be violating Pennsylvania state law.
We can't punch a well in the borough ourselves. I can't put a well in my backyard because of ordinances in the town.
There's no ordinance in town, but there's nothing from the feds that stops you.
Well-
There's nothing from the state. Everybody that owns a piece of property owns the groundwater underneath it.
I'm sure they do.
There is this Husky Anna River Basin Commission that we're under that regulates withdrawals of over 100,000 gallons a day. So if you're doing more than that, you have to get, go through their process of approval. A family well, there's no approval necessary.
If I may, and Jack too, that, one of the benefits of being on the Spring Creek Watershed Commission is that we can collaboratively talk about relative withdrawals and those kind of things because, as I said, there's dozens of, every municipality, to your point, can basically pass their own ordinances, and as long as they're within DEP regulations or, you know, they can do whatever they want. I think the idea of this is that we have to collectively understand that we all have a role to play in the Spring Creek watershed, and whatever happens upstream affects downstream and vice versa, you know, that it's kind of all together. And I think that's the vision that we're trying to build here with a consensus roadmap.
As I, thinking I'm hearing from John is that we have little control as to what happens ahead of us or above us or over you. And there's areas that are growing, and there's many, many of those townships, probably all those townships are growing one way or another. Belfont's landlocked, we're not, we're not growing, we can't grow any bigger than we are. And so I understand, kind of understand, you know, the purpose of this commission and to have our voice to protect what does come our way once it gets to us. I'm just not sure if other townships, you know, how are they going to control what they use with building every year? You know, State College Borough has how many new high rises and more coming, and then other places are all residential types, I believe, maybe some business out there in some of the townships. But, you know, what's guiding them as to, okay, we got this water, we might as well use it, does that help somehow detract from what continues through the flow of the water source? I think is, is that what you're trying? Yeah, that's my, and I think it's sort of like our planning commissions, the Nittany Valley Planning Commissions, you try to get together and try to coordinate, keep every, give everybody a voice.
If I might too, in the center region, we do have the Regional Growth Boundaries and the Center Region Planning Agency and others who play a role in the individual municipalities.
With the growth that we've had over the last 50 years, how much decrease in water bubbling out of the spring have we had? Zero.
Just, if I remember, Todd Giddings did a study one time for us. He said there was 220 billion gallons of water underneath our area. 220 billion gallons. And what's our authorities take out, all of them combined? 10 million a day? I don't, I don't know what it is. There's a lot of water underground, that's all I know.
Does the commission look at anything like that as far as what he's talking about and how much each municipality takes out and they track the amount? Is that number available so we know?
DEP has records of-
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
DEP has it, and at the monthly commission meetings, Todd Giddings has come in and talked about the water table and how much when we have droughts and when we have extreme weather, how much that water raises and lowers. And the one I remember most vividly was from a couple of years ago, and he compared the drought period to the 2018 high flood period. And it was, we had at that point, the drought was about two-thirds less than what the high point was. There was still water down there. The, but we didn't, haven't had the question that you're asking is to how much at any one point there is, and it fluctuates depending as Paul-
I read that, I've been reading this report. I have a couple of questions that you can answer, I'm sure. It was brought up at previous meetings by Michael Stumpf. What does the Phase Two plan state that there will be no changes in governance? It says that, right?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So, so if there's no change in governance, no legal jurisdiction, and no means to enforce the plan, what obligation will local authorities have to follow the plan?
There is none. I mean, the point of, well, the last two whereas's, if you look at the resolution, it says, supporting the effort in no way obligates any of the municipalities in any way to participate, and that's part of the founding documents of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. And anytime you may choose to withdraw support for the plan. So it is a voluntary organization, and we, what we really want to do is get everybody on the same page to appreciate that this is a collective resource that we all need to work together to protect, I believe, to John's point. And that by doing so, it isn't just, we're doing good. We, as individual municipalities, benefit from the region. That like, this is an economic engine for us. This is, you know, a draw for outside developers and other things, that there are some real tangible economic benefits to participating. And if you happen to get into the MS4 program, or you happen to get into other things, there are some really tangible benefits there that could relate to the, but there's nothing regulatory or compelling legally outside of your own ordinances or any federal or state regulations.
Other than a financial commitment. Where it's, I read the document, it said we're looking at 500,000, 250,000 per year for the next three years. 250,000 for the first three years, 250 in addition to that. I read it in the document.
Yes.
That was, yes, you did read that there. I will agree with that. But Paul, can you tell what the subsequent conversations were about that?
Sure, yeah, that was really a shot in the dark. If you were starting from ground zero, fortunately, we're not starting at ground zero. There's an awful lot of data there, there's an awful lot of expertise. We have things that have happened since, the Penn State Water Initiative, and, you know, there's lots of reasons to think that at least the initial part of this development is much more modest in the $35,000 to $45,000 range that I talked about. And that anything above and beyond that would really be from grants that would go toward developing it and the individual projects, which would be happening anyway, whether that was right there, in buffer developments or those kind of things. So I think that was just kind of a spitball number, for lack of a better analogy. It's really a shot in the dark, we have no idea whether it's accurate or not.
I saw the same thing, too. I read 300 to 500,000.
There's 101 pages.
For Phase Three, what I saw somewhere. The only two questions I have left is, one is that, how many employees do they have now?
We don't have any employees. Well, we do, we have one who's a webmaster and communications director.
Is Ms. French still on staff?
No.
Okay.
She was a consultant.
She was a consultant, and no, she's not.
Yeah, there's only one employee, part-time employee.
Facilitator of the-
Right, for the Phase Two. Phase Two is ended. She is no longer employed as a consultant.
Yeah, the other thing is, I haven't, nobody has attended the Belfont Authority meetings to brief us on this.
I would be happy to come.
That probably would be a good idea.
Please let me know what you mean.
Because we are the decision-makers of whether to participate or not.
Sure. I just have one more question. On your vision statement, the vision for Spring Creek watershed is integrated management of water resources, and under your guiding principle, it says, decision-making that spans political boundaries is essential to fully implement the watershed management. What does that mean, actually? Does that mean every, a conglomerate of all the boroughs decides what to do with the water or how to manage it, or some water goes here, or what does that mean?
What it's trying to say, and again, I would have to go back and look at the specific language, is that what we're trying to get is a consensus vision, that everybody agrees that this is, again, a valuable resource, that this is our vision for what the watershed should look like over the next 50 years, smart development, whatever those parameters are, and that the individual municipalities would buy into that and align to the extent they could their ordinances and development plans and other things to that, to that vision. But there's nothing compelling to your earlier question, sir. There's nothing as legally compelling about that. But I will say that to the, to the point of presenting to the authority, water authorities, we've done that as well, but they're not actually members of the commission. The commission is made up of the member municipalities.
Well, we, oh, no, never mind.
I wasn't, I was just saying, I mean, I can, I'd be happy to present to them anytime. We're happy to have that dialogue.
We have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 P.M.
What's that?
We have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 P.M.
I think I can make it, actually. And I have one at Walker Township Wednesday, so I'm happy to go.
Doug, where is that meeting for Paul's?
Oh, right here. Oh, right there? Okay. I'll go home and-
You just need your stuff there.
Well, we are at time, so we might have to wrap this up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you, James.
Ready?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. The August 2nd, 2021 Belfont Borough Council meeting is called to order. We have a work session on the Diamond Area Safety Improvements and the Spring Creek watershed presentation on the Phase Three One-Water Plan in our work session prior to this. The plan is to have these, the CNET taping of those two events put on our website so that the public may see what was discussed here this evening for discussion. We'd like to have a pledge of allegiance, a moment of silence, and then the roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can start with the roll call here. Mr. Eaton.
Here.
Ms. Lumboski.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Prendergast is excused. Mr. Hardeman.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
I'm here.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Abbott.
Here.
Mayor Wilson.
President.
Next on the agenda is approval minutes. We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2021. Brackville, second, Eaton.
Brackville and Eaton. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, so moved. Next, we have the consent agenda. We'll have a motion if anyone wants any of these removed, then say so.
Eaton, make that motion.
Okay.
Sorry, Eaton, I mean, don't forget to speak.
That's okay.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Clayton, Eaton, and Clayton.
We're gonna have that once in a lifetime.
Had to do it. Nothing to be removed?
I would like to remove the request to close portions of North Monroe Street, please. And do that individually.
We'll do that one separately.
The fourth one down.
Okay. So consent agenda is the HARP certificate and the four, other four communications except the Monroe Street block party. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Okay, Doug?
Okay, I, I'm not on this committee, but the letter he received in the packet was not accurate. So I'd like to request to close portions of East Lynn Street, not North Monroe, from North Monroe to Simpson Street, with the hours remaining the same as stated in the request to close. So instead of North Monroe Street, it would be East Lynn Street to Simpson Street.
From North Monroe?
I beg your pardon?
From North Monroe?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And all of those residents in that block have been notified and agreed to the closing.
Okay. So we need you to make a motion to do that.
Yes, please, I would like to make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second Brackville.
Johnson and Brackville. Discussion?
The residents of the 600 block of North Monroe Street are very happy.
They were the ones that were being affected by this request?
They would, they would be in the quarry.
Oh, gotcha.
So.
So what happens when somebody doesn't edit the request?
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, so moved. Moving on to written communications.
First one is special event request. Senator Corman's run to remember the 20th anniversary of 9/11, which obviously is Saturday, September 11th. They would like to start this event, which is a road race, 10K, starting at the Belfont Middle School. They'll have an opening ceremony and start at 8:46 a.m. in conjunction when the first tower fell. The road path is similar to Herbie's Home Town Loop, involves portions of the following streets of North Spring, South Spring, Crawford, Blanchard, Humes, Hughes, John Miller Lane, East Bishop, Parkview Boulevard, East High, McAllister, East Howard, North Monroe, Curtain Street, and I think School Street's involved as well, coming out of the middle school. The event would also likely have a 21-gun salute at the start and possibly a cannon fire in one of the reenactor-type cannons taking place as part of the recognition of the ceremony.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Johnson, second?
I'll second it.
Clayton. I have a question. When I was looking at a map, it looks like the route goes through parts of Spring Township. Does it?
No, it does not.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question. Any other questions or discussion?
Do we really have to have cannons?
It's part of the request.
You'll probably find somebody in the borough with fireworks.
Yeah, that's for sure.
So if you don't want a cannon, you'd have to amend the motion.
Which says maybe, maybe fire, a cannon might be there, but they may not fire. I mean, that's what it says here.
Yeah, they were trying to, you know, schedule that, it wasn't confirmed at the time of the request.
Tell me, yeah, but no cannons. Forget it.
I get the 21-gun salute, I'm not sure about the cannon myself.
Yeah, me too.
So if you don't, if you want, if you want to say it's okay to have a cannon there, but not fire, make that motion. If you want to say that the cannon, there's no firing of cannons and not there, you have to amend the motion. Otherwise, it stays there and they have the possibility of doing it. It's up to you all.
It'd be worse than fireworks in here still, right? I heard them again the other night.
I know.
Did you hear?
Blanchard Street.
All is over our way.
16th birthday party, I think.
Stay focused.
Come on. So, we're making a minute, or do we just go ahead?
I, I just let it go.
Okay, that's fine with me.
I, I have a question. When I was looking at a map, it looks like the route goes through parts of Spring Township. Does it?
No, it does not.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question. Any other questions or discussion?
Do we really have to have cannons?
It's part of the request.
You'll probably find somebody in a borough with fireworks.
Yeah, that's for sure.
So if you don't want a cannon, you'd have to amend the motion.
Which says maybe, maybe fire. Cannon might be there, but they may not fire. I mean, that's what it says.
Yeah, they were trying to, you know, schedule that. It wasn't confirmed at the time of the request.
Tell me, yeah, but no cannons. Forget it.
I get the twenty-one gun salute, I'm not sure about the cannon myself.
Yeah, me too.
So if you don't, if you want, if you want to say it's okay to have a cannon there, but not fire, make that motion. If you want to say that the cannon, there's no firing of cannons and not there, you have to amend the motion. Otherwise, it stays there and they have the possibility of doing it. It's up to you all.
It'd be worse than fireworks in here still, right? I heard them again the other night.
I know.
Did you hear?
Blanchard Street.
All is over our way.
Sixteenth birthday party, I.
Stay focused.
Come on. So there's, we'll make an amendment, or do we just go ahead?
I, I just let it go.
Okay. That's fine with me.
As I've been, did you?
No, we have not yet. We're still having discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, so moved.
Thank you. Next item, request to hold another special event. This one would be in Tallyrand Park. It's part of the Jana Marie Foundation Mindful Rhythms. They'd like to use the gazebo area or that side Saturday, August fourteenth, ten thirty to eleven thirty. They're asking for a fee waivers as well.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Hamboski.
Hamboski, and who's second?
Haldeman.
Haldeman. Okay. Discussion? I, I looked up their website today. They are not a Belfont-based group, so the fee waiver needs to be excluded by.
What I would do is, I'd ask you to approve this conditionally upon the fee waiver being approved. If there's a Belfont resident that makes the application, if that's not the case, then no fee waiver. I mean, if we've done that in the past, we know with the.
I'll make that amendment to the board.
Okay. So the conditional approval.
Yeah.
I'll second it, Hamboski.
Additional, Johnson and Hamboski. And the other question I has, have we checked to make sure that there's nothing else scheduled in the park at this time?
I, Melissa put this in front of us. I am assuming that was done.
Okay. So as long as there's no conflict and the whole thing, go ahead. Okay, so it's a conditional approval. Any other discussion?
In some ways, it's kind of twisted to do that because it seems like we're, you know, we have guidelines, but we're going, because I might not even be a member of the group, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and put that in for this.
We've just entered the last meeting with the board.
I know we did.
There's been other events.
Well, it's been fairly new to this committee.
Any other discussion?
Well, if you would, I don't want to belabor this, if you want to have further discussion on that sometime in the future, let's do it. But for tonight, I'm gonna vote to approve it.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and pass this motion, and then we'll make a referral to, back to the parks and rec about that particular issue.
Okay.
So, okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. And regarding the fee waivers, that will be referred back to the parks and rec for further discussion.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay.
Next item, just invitation from Belfont Emergency Medical Services. They're having their third annual joint municipal meeting, Monday, August thirtieth. They start with a tour at six thirty, presentation at seven. They'd like an RSVP by August twenty-fifth. If you want any assistance from, in doing that on your behalf, let us know. There's no action there. There we, we have a notice about, from Center County Government Planning Office to Walker Township about review of some zoning amendments they're working on in Walker Township. There's no action needed. It's just for your information, downtown parking complaint, this, you know, it's in your packet, there's concerns about the loss of parking and reservations, parking is there for your review or consideration.
So I can see three options here, and I'll kind of leave it up to the council as to what they want to do. We can refer it to Streets for further consideration, or we could put it in a work session to have everybody have a discussion, or we can hold this issue off until the public hearings in September, since the majority of this complaint surrounds the Diamond Area.
Well, there's a speaker here tonight to talk to this issue, if you want to have them speak now or later.
It's, under oral, we have.
Mitchell Bradley.
Yes, Mitchell Bradley here.
I would like to say go to, at least go to Streets and then maybe possibly do a work session. Again, this is one of those situations where we have an ordinance, but we change it to accommodate one business. And in this case, you know, one business was doing an opening, I believe, and so.
That's the next one. That's the next one. That's the next item.
Yes.
What is this about?
This is eliminating.
General, yes.
Yep. You're good. Keep on the monitoring.
Yep.
Mr. Bradley, do you want to talk right now?
I've never been to a council meeting.
Do you have to go up to the podium and start talking? Tell where you live and what you.
I'm Mitchell Bradley. I live here in Belfont, and I'm owner of Victorian House Antiques on Allegheny Street. I know most of you. I've been in business for twenty-seven years. The past sixteen have been here in Belfont, which is also where I grew up. So I've always had a vested interest in this town. But what I've been seeing over the past, maybe eight years, I haven't looked back, is a slow deterioration of shopper-friendly policies around town. It began, I think, with the bump-out curbs, and then it went to approximately doubling of meter rates around town, and that's been followed at an accelerated pace, I think, within the last year with permit-only parking. I counted at least one hundred and thirty-five new red-painted permit-only spaces around the perimeter of downtown the other day, of which a hundred and five are within one block of the shopping district. The seven spaces on the Diamonds have been bagged for weeks. I understand there's a proposal for a roundabout. That, can't imagine, is going to start next week. I hate the idea of a roundabout to begin with. I don't know if council's considered other options for the Diamond Area. I know there's been some tragedy there. But I would, I would request at least that those spaces be made available for shoppers until there's a definitive plan. I know I'm the only one here speaking for the businesses downtown, but I've spoken with a number of them, and it just doesn't seem as though the policymakers in town are considering the impact on local businesses. And I don't need to tell you that this past year and a half has been exceedingly challenging with the pandemic, and now we're having to struggle with customer parking. I counted at least sixteen bag meters that I know went up during, well, most of them went up during the pandemic and the shutdown, and it helped restaurants that could only do takeout. I was completely on board with it. Now, I think there's only one restaurant in town that still is takeout-only. Every other restaurant has dine-in, and I'm wondering why so many meters are still bagged. I think that's, pretty much covers it. I'm just, to reiterate quickly, I'm just seeing an accelerated loss of shopper parking, and it's getting difficult downtown. And I would hope for future support, you know, to keep the business district thriving, because it's, it's not been easy. It never is easy to run a small business, but it's much more difficult when parking spaces keep being eliminated. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Mitch. Thank you.
So what's the sense of the council at this point?
Well, I'd just like to, just make a comment to follow that up. I had conversation with DBI, what's her name, Jerry Lynn?
Jenny Lynn.
Jenny Lynn. And asked her if she could possibly put together a short survey for the downtown businesses to see what their feeling, feelings are about the, you know, the parking situation. I mean, we've always been a parking deficit, now we're really in a drought for parking with the elimination of about nineteen spaces, not counting bagged spaces that are, that are lost. You know, I'd like to see council really think about trying to be creative and look at, anytime you lose a space, try to find another space. Number of years ago, this was back when I was on council, we did a survey, parking survey, and we went around and looked at some of the possibilities to be a little more creative, like approaching the Belfont American Legion and some of the churches that don't use their parking space all through the week, and maybe that we, that the borough could lease or make some agreement with those places to have parking there on certain days, certain times, maybe just Wednesdays when we have a lot of pressure, you know, and let that be known to the public that parking is available in the American Legion lot in these five spaces or whatever. But there are ways to increase parking in town. I know we can't create new ground or business, but we can utilize some of the spaces that aren't being used. And I think we need to be way, way, way more creative in creating parking, especially when we're eliminating parking so easily.
Well, first of all, we're not eliminating parking so easily, okay? We're not doing that.
Well, it doesn't even be hard to do.
Okay, well, let me say a couple things.
Let Doug have his, his chance to speak.
Mitch, I'd like to answer your question in regard to the red parking spaces. They are available to anybody, and you have one hour free parking there, no charge. They're not assigned to anybody. If you have a commuter permit or a permit parking, you may use that space at any red space at any time. If you come into town and there's a red space open, free for the first hour. And our parking enforcement people have a device, and Chief Weaver can explain it much better than I can, that logs those cars for the hour and will, will alert them if the car hasn't moved in an hour. I think that's accurate, isn't it, Chief?
Yes, sir.
He's shaking his head yes. So to answer, first to address your question, that those, I think you said a hundred and forty-seven spaces or hundreds, whatever.
Hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah.
Hundred and five within one block.
Yeah, they are open to the public for free for one hour.
Could I respond to that?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
One hour is not.
You have to go back up to the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you can hear.
One hour really is not enough time for somebody coming to town, especially if they have to walk into town, if they want to have a bite to eat, have lunch, have dinner, go to the shops. There's no way an hour is gonna be very helpful.
Okay, my response to that would be then they need to get a metered space in the north, south, or west lot. And, and I'm just saying that if you go to Walmart and you have to park a hundred yards from the door, it's not any further from one of the parking lots to go from behind the Waffle Shop to your store. It can't be. A walk. Is it?
No, but for somebody who's elderly, and I have a lot of elderly customers, that is not going to happen.
Well, so that's my response to yours. I, I've driven through town for the last two weeks, and I told this to council in the work session, and not at different times of the day, and each time my wife and I've driven through town, we have not had a problem finding an open space in the downtown area. We came through Sunday morning at eleven-thirty. I know it's Sunday and the stores are closed.
Right.
I was coming west on High Street from Water Street. The left-hand side of High Street was vacant.
On a Sunday?
Yep. At eleven-thirty in the morning. Not, one, one car was in front of the YMCA, all right? The Plaza is open on Sunday.
Most places are not, though.
Right. Right. And in terms of the vibrancy of the downtown, I was in Friday, in the font, on last Friday evening. It was a wonderful time. There was lots of people in town. Went into the Governor's Pub. It was packed, you know, and, and there was parking. Amazingly, there was parking. I will say that in front of Governor's Pub, there's two reserved spaces for pickup, which I don't think they should be having two spaces there, just like you said. I think it's, at this time, we only allotted them one space, so we need to address that. But I'm not, myself personally, I'm not convinced that the parking in downtown Belfont is an issue at this moment, except on Wednesdays when the court hearings are, are in play, in, on Wednesdays. And I had a conversation with the mayor, and I, I'm putting you on the spot, but I think you agreed with me at one time.
I've, well, yeah, I've always agreed that we don't need a parking garage, and I think that we do have, we, we did have adequate parking, but now we've eliminated twenty spaces, so, and I, that, I think that's the trend. We want to throw up the red flag to say, okay, we've always been on the borderline for parking, now we're not, now we're going under.
I appreciate it, Mitch. I really do.
It's hard as a business owner, and I don't think you own a business downtown.
I do not. But I do patronize downtown.
Yeah, yes. Well, thank you. Can people like me suggest or propose? That's a question.
What we might do, because we're time-limited here, is we have a Streets Committee meeting, and we could come to that and could have a discussion with the Streets Committee.
Okay.
Because that can be done in much more depth than we have time allotted for this.
My only, my only question would be, would, could that one hour be considered raised to two hours? That would make a very big difference.
That's something that you could discuss with the Streets Committee.
Yeah, we're, Mitch, we're open to any suggestions.
Okay.
So I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
And I know there are lots of moving parts, and it's not just about the businesses, it's the residents and another.
Oh, yeah. I just want to mention the bag meters as well, because that's not something council does. That's either done by the police for a particular reason, or maybe even the administration. And I think on Allegheny Street, where you're talking about, when it made that one side, but there is, there's issues there, there's safety issues there, and.
Right.
The sidewalk was closed.
Right.
And I saw people parking, and they were still using the parking space. It may have been bagged, but they were using it.
Yeah.
So, you know.
We have lawbreakers everywhere.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, it's not everybody, it's not, council doesn't control everything. It's, it's a joint venture.
Well, we're not saying, we're saying in, in combination with the, the leasing of spaces to the county and the elimination of spaces.
I'll say too, with the county.
And then in combination with.
That's a temporary situation. When we, when we talked to the county, they said we would try it, see what happens. We're not sure, just coming out of COVID, how, how well things are going to go, or how bad things are going to go.
Well, I'd ask somebody to call Sean Thompson, because he called me again last week and said, I don't know what's going on, no one's gotten back to me or whatever, so please get in touch with him. Thank you.
So if you can give your email address to Ralph and Don, they will invite you to the next Streets Committee meeting.
Okay. Before we have this conversation again, because last meeting, we had lost nine spots. Now we lost nineteen spots, and within a minute of us losing nineteen spots, we were now, we had now lost twenty spots. Can we have a map of these lost spots?
What are you gonna do, just walk around town?
I want a map. 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 I want a map.
Take a piece of paper and make your own map.
No, Tom, I want an official map showing our lost spots.
Ralph, did you hear that?
So let's move on to the next topic.
Can I just ask one question? I do agree with Doug. I came through town at two-thirty, and there was lots of parking places on Allegheny Street. My question is, if you want to park in a red parking place, how do you know it's up free for an hour? Where's the sign?
There's signs.
There is signs?
Yes.
Where are they located?
I think it's on the permit sign. It says one hour park. If you don't have a R. permit or a commuter permit.
I guess driving by, I missed the permit signs. I didn't see where they were.
Well, you know, and Mitch, me as a council member, I take responsibility for not getting the word out to folks of this new parking system that's in place, so I don't, I'll take some of the blame for that, that maybe, well, it's, it's been proven that we haven't been good at getting the word out of how this new parking system works, so I, I take some of that responsibility for that. But, but we're trying. We're, at this point, you know, so. I think what members of the community don't appreciate is, we developed a permit policy because of the cost of replacement meters.
You're gonna have to speak up.
We developed a permit policy because of the cost of replacement meters. Our old meters became antiquated. We couldn't replace them, and luckily, we did find a supplier using Chinese parts, which we were able to use for the coin meters, which got them down to, I think, in the order of two hundred and fifty dollars per meter.
for the coin meters, which got them down to, I think, in the order of $250 per meter. But if it wouldn't have been for that ultra-low-priced unit, I think we were up in the $500 a head meter. So that was 135 times 500. Parking meters and red line, or parking permits and red lines seem to be a lot cheaper. So we did it to save some money, because we couldn't afford to buy the replacement meters. So that was a big part of what happened.
Okay. Moving on.
Okay, thank you. Next item under written correspondence is some questions or concerns about the permitting of food trucks in the downtown area specifically. The letter is there for your review.
And we will also refer this to Streets for review and recommendation.
Sure. Okay, we'll take care of that. And the next item, there's an article, it's just, it's an FYI, or you may want to refer to a committee, just asking if your police department's ready for changes in the hiring processes, and we will have to work with the Civil Service Commission as well.
Okay, so there's two questions that I have on this one. First one was, we, in the budget this year, we put in $10,000 for policy review. Is this something that could be included in that policy review? And it's.
It certainly can be, yes. I think we, you know, we do have a cushion there with that line item, but also, of course, that advice we would give to the Civil Service Commission. So yes, we have some funding to do that.
Okay, so can we then, so let me see if I understand you correctly. So should this be referred to the Civil Service Commission, or should this be work in conjunction with this, the funding that we have in the budget with our employment lawyer?
Well, we would do it on behalf of the Civil Service Commission. They have no staff, no budget, so.
Okay.
We can, if that's the direction council wants to go, and we're happy to do that, and then give any information received to the Civil Service Commission, so.
I'm confused as far as the money goes, and what we're talking about is $10,000 for for the policies of the police. If that money is allotted to policies, how how can we take money from it to put it somewhere else?
Well, we're trying to lower that cost. It's a budget number right now. And we met with the chief earlier this year and the staff, and they're going to review the policies and get them pretty much in ready form, so that it's a lot less of a review that's needed. There are policies that have already been adopted by accredited law enforcement agencies in the area, so the review time would be a lot less. We don't think it'll be $10,000. That's what, that's my thoughts here, and I think there's room in the budget to have to see if, get our hiring policies in place according to these new acts.
Shawn, can you? I can see you're, you're raring to go.
Turn on red.
The Act 57 and 59 has to do with the civil service. So what, MOPAC, MOPAC governs the municipal police officers, all the agencies throughout the Commonwealth. That's ran by the state police and the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. So the, the way in which the Act 57, I do believe, reads, there are certain things now that, procedures that we have to share with PennDOT, or I'm not, with MOPAC, our background investigations, okay? We already, I think I sent the email to you, Ralph, and the mayor, that we, we are in compliance with everything prior to that. Now we just have to, every agency within the Commonwealth has to let MOPAC know the outcome and, you know, sign off, have the applicant sign off on a waiver form for the, one of the, it's a pre.
Our next meeting. And then we also discussed the 36-hour music festival, which I believe was already approved previously.
Yes.
So I have nothing else further for that. And the lighting on the railroad pedestrian bridge is being researched. And I have nothing else further after that.
Any questions? Sing non? Moving right on, human resources.
I, the only thing I have to report is, we will have our next Human Resources meeting on August 4th. That's the end of my report.
Short and sweet. Okay, any questions for human resources? Moving on to safety, Randy?
Okay, there was no meeting to the safety committee meeting, so I'm going to ask the same question I asked at the last meeting, is have we gotten any more estimates on the addressing the vulture issues at Missoula Park?
Have you seen anything, Don? I've not seen anything. I think we're waiting on one more estimate.
Yeah, it's been a month.
Yes.
I'm a patient person. So sooner or later, I'm going to move on to the next one.
I mean, you know, once we've done our, once we tried to get estimates, we can move on, so.
We have one right now, right?
Yes. We can set up a.
So can they be recontacted to see if they maybe forgot about it?
We'll do that.
And I received an email from Ralph, from Heather Heckman, early, early care and education director for YMCA. She provided two safety programs for child programs for the YMCA and also the elementary school. So I passed that on to our chief, chief of the fire company, Gary Loer. I understand Chief Weaver received a copy of it. When I mentioned it to Chief Loer, I just said we probably talk about it at our next fire executive meeting. And I assume that's all, all they wanted, to communicate. And that's my report.
Any questions for safety?
Randy, I saw your vultures sitting on top of the Water Works building the other week. I don't know if anybody else noticed that, but they seem to be moving into our, into Tally Ram Park.
Wow. I'll get that estimate.
Okay, then moving on to water refuse collection and compost.
Tomorrow, Tuesday, August 3rd, we have a Borough Authority meeting at 6:00 PM. And just confirmed tonight, I believe we're adding the Spring Creek Water Shed.
I'll reach out to Paul and try to set that up, but it sounds like we're adjusting the agenda to do that.
Yeah, maybe. So that might be on the agenda tomorrow. Other than that, I have no other report.
Any questions? Sing non? Streets?
We met on July 22nd and 29th. The materials are coming in for the temporary safety measures at the Diamond. This is the sort of the temporary version of Plan B that we saw tonight, and I think it has already been approved by, I mean, we, we approved these materials, they're being delivered. And I mean, it says council may take action to modify the process, but I feel like we, I, I don't see any reason why we should modify it since we already voted for it and we paid for it, and the materials are here, but that's what it says, so that's what I'm throwing out there.
So you're recommending?
I'm recommending that they should proceed as, proceed as we voted on it previously.
So Ralph, do we need a motion to proceed?
No, no, that was already done. We're just checking our steps, and as I noted here, we plan to notify the business community at least a week in advance. We're working out scheduling right now. It might actually go into September, but as soon as we get a firm date and time, we'll get the word out to everybody.
Okay.
And then the, the only other issue is, I guess I'm making a motion to schedule public hearings to discuss the permanent options for the Diamond area, that as we saw in the, in the session.
Abbott and who will second that motion?
I'll second that, right.
Abbott and Brackville. Discussion?
Who, who does that, just, I mean, like, like, we approve it now, what's, what's next? Who makes, who picks those dates? Who publicly, is that, is that you?
Yeah, us as staff take care of that. Now, we'll, I think I'd work with the Streets Committee, look at some dates and times and number of sessions and those kinds of things, if that's all right with council.
I, when we do that, I would like to see an evening one for those who work during the day, so they have the, they'll, and also a daytime, which is probably a weekend, so that those who can't make it during the week could have an afternoon session. Because I think that, that will help accommodate the majority of the public, I think, if we have a little bit of both.
Put that in a motion?
Yeah.
I'll accept it.
Yeah, I can't motion.
She can't make a.
Well, I don't know if you need to. If we just accept it, because she made the motion, I second it, we could, we could accept that.
We could.
I rest it in the committee meeting, Joe.
Okay, yeah, that's fine with me.
Be happy to do that.
So any further discussion? Sing non? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Anybody else have anything about Streets?
I have a question. Oh, go ahead. Well, I just want to, I recall tonight, earlier tonight, that the comment was made that the roundabout's starting soon, and that, you know, and I, I know that's not correct, and I don't want that, that to go out there, because that's not the case. You know, we're, we're still, again, we haven't even had our, our meetings yet. This is the temporary setup, this starting soon, and not the roundabout. So I just wanted to clarify that, because that, that was stated tonight. Thank you. My question is, the last meeting, I thought I was told that the West Curtain was going to be paved August 1st to 2nd now, is, or do you say the first week?
First, early August is what we heard.
We said August.
I thought it was first, August 1st. I've tried to look it up, but we don't have a minute, minutes here right now.
We said August.
And I told the people on West Curtain, August 1st.
Go to CNET, and we play that for you.
Yeah, I was going.
Dominic Hall Borough Office.
It's from the, and that's from the gas company. We don't, they don't.
We have all heard lots of complaints, but hopefully this will be fixed.
My second question, are we going to set up, have somebody colleague ask them to talk to us before we start the next project?
We can. Matt's trying to work with, he's setting up a meeting. The big project that's in the works is beside the courthouse, going up the hill, up the.
Is that what they're working on now?
Yeah, that's the main project that's in the works that's big. And we're trying to coordinate a meeting with the county, you know, and all of that. Other than that, we can talk about the small cuts and so on. They're not, they're, they're talking about East Curtain in 2022, but any of these projects can be bumped. They find a higher priority project, it could be.
I'd just like to, when we, when you do that, if I can get in on that, because everybody has curves up there now. If you put an inch and a half of macadam on top of those curves, it's going to be water going down the sidewalks instead of down the curb. So I just want to make sure all those items, the questions we have are addressed.
We will do our best. They are a separate entity, you know, and we, we don't have control over that. They work with the PUC and all of that. And they do try to find the least expensive route, whether it's under the sidewalk or on the berm or what have you. And then they, they do change their schedules frequently. If they find a problem in an area, you know, they'll jump to that area first and push our area off, but.
Well, when everybody up there saw bill, bill marks on the street in the spring, they thought it was coming pretty soon.
I understand, and they do that well in advance. They do the planning and all of that, but it might sit on the shelf for a while. So as we hear things and as we try to get people in, we'll, by all means, we'll have them come into a meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else on Streets?
Do we need to ask council what's the best time for them for the stakeholders' meeting or this talk? Do we need input from, other than the committee, to, to pick a date and time or dates and time? Do we need to pull the rest of council with a suggestion or?
We're, we're happy to do that. I was going to.
I'm asking council.
Work with the committee, then get a, kind of maybe get a couple of dates in mind and send that out to everybody.
Is that okay with the rest of council?
Well, we meet to Thursday at noon, so get us, get us the information before noon Thursday, and we'll be glad to look at whatever numbers come in.
Yeah. That's the, that's the easiest way.
Sure.
Somebody let Mike.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I thought it might save us a step if we talk about it right now. Okay, great, yeah. Like Randy said, Thursday at noon, we meet, so we'll be making some suggestions at that time. So any input, send them to Mary.
Just for information, I will not be available at the following Thursday's meeting, if we have that. We talked about postponing a couple, that might be one of them.
I won't be available this Thursday. We had a death in the family, so I will be out of town.
I think that's too out of town.
Yeah, we'll have to look at scheduling and, and see if we have enough for, we can be in touch with you about that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, then moving on to energy environment. Do you want to take this, since Mike's not here? I can, if you don't. Some of these items I can't do, but I can do the first two at least. There, we did hold a meeting on July 21st. We talked about the ICLI program, and there wasn't much else on the agenda, so that was a very, very short meeting. The meeting for tomorrow is canceled, and the next one is scheduled for 4:00 PM on August 18th. There are two items in the packet. I don't, I read them, but I don't know if I have any additional information beyond what's in the packet.
Their purpose is just information. There's ones from First Energy, ones from APPI, who is like an energy advisor for the borough, any authority.
So the, as I read it, the First Energy one basically is saying that First Energy is joining a coalition of other energy companies around the country to help improve electric vehicle charging, high, high, fast charging stations along the major highways throughout the state. So that, so the people who, as we convert to more and more electric vehicles, people will be able to go further distances without being anxious about running out of electricity in their car. And the other one, I just said it, just kind of give some numbers. Okay, any questions? Moving on to special committee reports.
I'll go with Safer Grant Committee. Safer Grant funds have been received by the borough. Meetings are now starting to be set up with, what's the name of that company?
First Alert.
They'll be starting to come into Balfont here, probably toward the end of August, early September, start meeting with fire department members and get that bull running for recruitment. So, and that's about as much as I know. Nick Caputo is our manager of the Safer Grant, and he is overseeing that, those meetings and getting this set up. That's the report.
Don, you want to do the next one?
Yeah, I, just to add on to what Randy said, there were, just for councils, you know, own knowledge, there were two Safer Grants. Randy mentioned the one Safer Grant, that First Alert, and they're doing some, this is the recruitment grant. That's a $500,000 grant that the fire department received, and Randy explained where that is. This particular grant here was for the safety apparatus, the breathing apparatus for the fire department. It was another grant that they received for 400, in excess of $400,000, and the borough received all 400,000. And I think the fire department has already worked on purchasing the equipment, so that's where that one stands. The second item on the list is, this, you know, probably could have been under the Energy Environmental Committee, but we were asked, the Association of Climate Change Officers established a Climate Action Advisory Board, seeking someone from the borough to sit in on it. I sat in on the first meeting. The mission of the Climate Action Advisory Board is to build capacity across sectors of Pennsylvania to address climate change. They want to scale up the climate smart, scale up climate smart workforce through education and training, research and analysis, research and analysis, and solutions workshop. The leadership, they have a leadership series beginning August 24th that's free of charge. Part of what our responsibility is, is to get the word out through, you know, whether it's PML, Boroughs Association, PSATs, but the, the advisory board's made up of all leaders across Pennsylvania, university, municipalities, all, all different, all different entities. So we'll, we'll do our part in trying to do what we can to get the word out. Anyone in, in this body that's interested in any of these research opportunities, which Anyone in, in this body that's interested in any of these research opportunities, which are free, please let me know, and I'll forward you. I don't want to forward emails to everyone that, if they're not interested, but if you are interested, please let me know, and I'll make sure that you get a copy of it.
I'd like one.
Okay, Joanne.
You want to start it?
I was not in attendance at the last airport meeting, but we did have discussion prior to that, and I see you've taken some action to go forward with the process of the renaming, so I'll let Mr. Stewart take, take this.
The Center County Airport Authority is looking at the possibility of changing its name from University Park. This primarily be the terminal when you go up to the airport. To, and because of confusion from people trying to find the airport itself, they're thinking, you know, where's the State College Airport? So obviously, they want to try to simplify things by putting the name State College Regional, or something to that effect, on the signage, so that people relate that airport to, when you do a search, you're looking for State College. The planes use the SCE symbol, as you all, whoever flies would be, would know that. So they're just trying to coordinate the symbol, the name, the location, so they'll create less confusion for people trying to find the airport. So Balfont Borough is a founding member of the Center County Airport Authority. And of course, the board asks that before anything is done, they get some feedback from the founding members. Center County Government, State College Borough, Balfont, then there's been some new members, Patton and Benner, so they're getting feedback. Action does not have to take place tonight, but they would like to get a feel for your thoughts, your ideas, you know, within the next month or so ideally.
So let me ask this question before I ask for a motion. I noticed in the, in the materials, there were mockups of two different kinds of naming for the thing. Do we want to hold part of a work session to have that discussion? Or should we just go ahead and say that we think it's a generally good idea, and they can do whatever they want to make it happen?
I would lean towards the latter.
So, what was, what's the sense of?
I'll make a motion to, to get this discussion started, I guess, to go ahead and approve or support the renaming of the State College, or the Center County Airport, however you want to phrase it right now.
Well, since we're founding members, could be Balfont.
Well, some people, we, believe me, Ralph and I.
Did you try that?
Well, not exactly, but we, we also, you know, it's a shared airport, so.
Sure, it's a Center County Airport.
Yeah, well.
Let me throw in this.
I'll second that, if you want to.
I don't want to.
Thank you.
Couldn't get Balfont State College Airport.
A couple of key points. The actual airport runways and, you know, all that's owned by Penn State. The Center County Airport Authority owns the parking lot and the terminal.
Right.
And that's called University Park Airport, I guess, or when you go up, it's University Park, which is what confuses people. And, you know, people who have been on the board for years and know Penn State, University Park is an address, a zip code, that Penn State wanted, you know, for the campus, so that.
Eisenhower gave to them.
Yes, exactly. There's confusion, you know, everybody that travels knows you have three letters when you go to any city. And you just put in, you know, I don't put in, I'm going, going to Lamont, I'm going to State College, or flying out of State College, you know, or whatever. Unfortunately, we don't put in, we're flying out of Balfont, we put in, we're flying out of State College. And that's what people are looking for when they're driving to the airport, trying to find it, Google it, you know, MapQuest it. They're having trouble finding it.
Yeah, SCE.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Forget it.
It's been handicapping Chicago for you.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, people have been trying to get into Chicago, they just can't, they keep in putting in C-H-I, and damn, O-R-D. So, okay.
They don't make sense, do they?
So, I guess, Ralph, you know, I shouldn't have used profanity there. I apologize to the public. Ralph, I do have a question now. And you touched upon it, that the university owns the runways. So the property, I take it, of the runways.
Yes.
And then the, the board, the airport board owns.
We're the only airports in the country that's shared ownership.
Okay.
Yeah, and so.
Pardon me?
Go figure.
Well, is there a tax, any tax benefit to the airport because it's owned by the university?
They, either, even if the authority owned it, or Penn State owns it, you know, it's non-taxable property.
The authority has to pay Penn State to use the runways, right?
The authority, yeah, well, the airlines pay. We, we get revenue, or the authority gets revenue from parking and rental cars and the Hertz, or whoever. And, and the.
Airlines.
The kiosks, and, and the.
Space in for airlines.
Inside the terminal.
Yeah, and I, okay, and thank you for that clarification, because I, I guess, from my perspective, I'm, 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 I feel very sorry for the confused Iranian doctoral student.
Yes.
That was listed in the, in the letter.
Right.
However, I think there could be a little bit more creativity, because that airport serves not only Center County, it serves Clinton County, it serves Clearfield, you know, it serves the center part of the state. So maybe I'll go really wild and throw out Midstate is a possible name.
That won't fly, John.
I know, but, but I'm, I'm saying, I, I, my comment would be, I think they could be a little bit more creative than saying, than just because SCE is on the tag, that doesn't mean it has to be State College. I think they could be a little bit more inclusive regionally.
They have regional on the end of State College.
I think that Burlington across the street has a State College address, so maybe let's just stay with the address that the municipality is in, and we can go home. About that, we're doing so good, guys, so good.
I, I, I'm fine with that.
I'm, I'm more confused now than I was, because, you know, I, I've always known this place as, as University Park. And I don't know why in today's world, they can't take SCE and just tag it to whatever entity is sitting there. Good for State College, it's a great branding tool, but that's what people are going to see. That's the name people are going to see when they come into this area.
Well, we have had promotional discussions when you enter the airport, and we've tried to broaden that picture. It doesn't now say, welcome to, I think it was, maybe it was before you were on the board. We, we, we generalized, not specifically welcome to Penn State, it was welcome to Happy Valley, but whatever. I, I don't want to prolong this.
But this is why I was thinking, suggesting maybe a work session, because I knew this was going to get a little.
No, I'll call a question.
Any objections to calling the question?
May I review the question? We're making the recommendation to go with the name of State College Regional Airport.
That's what you said.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with the calling.
Any objections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Begrudgingly, aye.
Aye, yes.
I'm a no.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not afraid of a no. I'm not afraid of State College.
That's fine.
Wish I had dinner.
Yeah. That wasn't me that was no, I was a yes.
You made the motion.
It's all your fault.
Okay, moving on. Ralph, it's your turn.
Very quickly, there's a PA municipal legal update through the Boroughs Association. It's virtual, August 4th and 5th, there's some very relevant sessions. We're going to take the 150 out of the line items, whether it's combined or individually, for training. And we would want, want to invite you to the sessions. The information's in your council agenda packet.
So, do we have a motion to use these funds for the legal update session on Thursday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
I'll make that motion.
Eaton?
I'll second Brackville.
And Brackville. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, so moved.
Real quickly, Act 65 of 2021 involves some mandates for council meeting agendas being posted prior to meetings, and having some detail in them. As I noted, I believe we're in compliance with that, although I'm going to watch the regulations and everything, and see if there's any amendments, but I believe we're in compliance. Next item, I did receive a couple of documents from Mr. Holderman, Councilmember Holderman, in regard to the Sunshine Act, that looked them over. I would say, the, my only question or gray area would be the committee meetings, standing committee meetings, as to whether or not they should be considered advertised, or they need to be advertised, or considered open meetings. And if you're, we can leave it as is with our meetings, or we could seek a legal opinion from our borough solicitor, and go from there.
What would you all like to do?
Well, you know, most, most committees are meeting virtual, or some, or some face to face now.
Some of.
They're, they're, yeah, it's a little bit of both, but mostly, I think, virtual.
So couldn't they just be invited, if they want to attend the meeting, they got a link?
Well, he's asking if we need.
That's, that's, that's the question. Do we advertise? The question is, do we advertise the committee meetings?
Right.
Or do we, do we advertise the main committee meetings? Do we continue doing as we're doing? Or do we ask this question to a solicitor, see if we're in compliance?
The problem with advertising is you're, like right now, we're can't, you know, we're postponing meetings because we don't have.
That's fine, there's, there's, you know, policies for that. If you can't cancel meetings, post it on the door. But you'd have to have the one advertisement of when your standing meetings are. And then if you cancel, you post it on the door, so it's not a, not a big deal to advertise.
Let's say we just advertise. As long as it's not a quorum, all right?
That's the question.
Yes.
If you're one less than a quorum, there seems to be some solicitors that say, you're, you're doing agency business. The, the, the sentence in the legal, the letter from the solicitor for the COG was, it's agency business, or, in that or part is the part that's a gray area. Like if you're doing business, but you have less than a quorum, you're deliberating, or you're doing business, even if it's less than a quorum, you might, you might need to advertise that meeting.
Let, let's, I'll make the motion to send the, the question to our borough solicitor, for an opinion on this.
I'll second Brackville.
Okay, Johnson and Brackville. Discussion?
The only thing I'll say is what the information I saw about school districts, I didn't see anything related to any borough anymore.
It was a call.
Talked about, talked about agencies and local governments in the letter, so.
I know, but there was no, there was nothing shown as to what they were doing.
No, there isn't. I'm just telling you, if you read the letter, the letter is more clear, related to municipalities, and, and subcommittees of the governing body than the legal opinion.
Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of sending this item to our solicitor for review? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, so moved.
That's all I have under my report.
And then we'll move on to old business?
Very quickly, we postponed, or can't, actually canceled the August 16th meeting, and thinking that we'd have the council retreat somewhere around that week. That's not happening. Just want to make sure, we just leave things as is, or if there's any changes.
Okay, it, because we have had a formal motion to cancel the August 16th meeting, we need a motion to reconsider, and it needs to come from someone who voted to cancel the meeting.
I think I voted no.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, you did vote no, so it has to be someone.
I'll make the motion to reconsider the couns, cancellation of the August 16th council meeting.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Johnson? Since I think having two motions doesn't make a whole lot of sense, we'll do this all in one motion. Any discussion?
I, I'll, I still think we should hold the meeting. There's, you know, look at our agendas, look how long they are. And if you miss a meeting, it's just, that next meeting is going to be a long meeting. I see no reason, since the, you know, we're not doing our meetings that we were going to do.
Retreat.
Removing, the retreat, that's being changed. That was the purpose of canceling that meeting. So I don't see that need. I think we should have the meeting.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved.
So you're going to chair the meeting?
Yeah, so Randy will be chairing the next meeting.
Was that your train?
Yep.
Okay, next item, Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission Grant, just an update. We've signed our end of the contract. It went back to the state, we're waiting for the completed contract. Hopefully have that pretty soon. Shade Tree review process, as you know, we did some online, our website work. I'm just going to let Dawn give you a little bit of background on that.
Oh, you can take it.
You know, you know.
Well, we had Blink 321, put, put a new format on our website. And actually, I, I think, the first time that, since they've done it, it was utilized by a resident. So anyone that really has any shade, shade tree request of removal, pruning, whatever it may be, can go to the website, type in shade tree, you'll come up with an application, fill it out, and it'll, if you get, also, if you could add some photos to it, it kind of expedites the decision-making process, because it will automatically, once you submit it, it goes to the Shade Tree Commission members, whom we don't really see that often, so they'll get the email directly, and then the response comes back to us, and then we can follow up and get back to the requestor as to whether or not their request is approved. So it seemed to work pretty well.
Anything else?
I have one more thing under old business.
Okay.
Ordinance 06212021, yeah, 01, which is the revision of the education that's allowed in the.
Right away.
Thank you. In the rightaways. I'm not comfortable signing this, because the feedback that I'm getting from, sorry, Eric, the feedback I'm getting from the citizens is that that's, this is not something they want. So I'm not going to sign this, so whatever you have to do to make it right, or to change it, or whatever.
We, we, we can refresh our memory from the Borough Code.
Plus, plus there's one line in here that's, that's a little confusing. Let me just do that while we have the floor. So sidewalks, occupied by lawns, sidewalks, and shade trees shall be maintained to exceed a height of six inches. I don't know if you can have a shade tree that's six inches, so you might have to rewrite that a little bit, if you're going to redo this at all, but still, I'll sign it, so.
We'll check the grammatical errors if there is any.
It doesn't make sense.
But anyway, you know, my recollection of the Borough Code is, after a period of time, the ordinance becomes effective anyway, even the mayor refuses to sign it. I just have to check the timeframe. I don't know if it's 30 days, or what have you. I can do that.
I'm just trying to represent the people that voted for representation.
And as I said before, I think I have received very similar comments, but the only way we can readdress this at this point is if someone who voted in favor of the ordinance makes a motion to reconsider. makes a motion to reconsider.
Do you recall the voting who?
I think it was whoever was here, I think it was unanimous.
It was, well Buddy wasn't here and I voted against.
So I, I'll make the motion to review the ordinance, I don't have that number in front of me.
To reconsider.
To reconsider.
Ameri, what was it, 0621?
It's 0621-2021-dash-oh one. And it's chapter 425-dash.
Okay. So we had, who, who made the motion, who seconded?
I made the motion, Brackville.
Brackville?
I'll second to Clayton.
Brackville and Clayton. All in favor reconsidering, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved.
So for clarification, I know Harry's thinking this, he, I'm sure he has letters out, I'm aware that he has letters out. What does that, what does that affect? Are they on hold or what's?
I'm gonna ask the Harry question, that's right. How many, how many people are?
Have it sent letters.
Yeah, have you sent letters to, I guess.
And you need to go up to the.
Are in the current violation?
Yes, or.
On this specific issue, at this point, I would say two.
Okay, and that's kind of my point of not signing this because if we have, we have two people who have some ornamental things, and I think, I know we're one of them, but they have stepping stones also placed in between.
That's not one of them.
That's not one of them?
No.
Well, they have.
As of this point.
Okay. All right, well anyhow, I just know that, that a lot of people said, come on, man, to me, and I, and I represent them, so I'm not, I'm not gonna go with this. And y'all can do it, whatever you think your constituents would want you to do. So what we do with those two letters, and I may send a letter back and tell them to hold the phone.
Does this go back to Streets Committee at that point?
I think so. So moving it back to Streets Committee and see what happens from there.
Okay.
You still on old business?
Yes.
Last meeting, the YMCA said they were having problems with the living parking spaces that we rented to the county up there, so patrons couldn't park close and get to the YMCA, and I thought somebody was gonna look into that.
Yeah, I, I mentioned that when we were talking about parking spaces. Sean called me, Sean Thompson called me a few days ago and wanted to know what was going on, and I said I'd bring it up to the meeting.
Well, I, I talked to YMCA today and they're still, can't park back there where the county is, and I understand why the council just can say, move back here county and let these, let these spaces for the people handicapped and elderly people park there so they can get into YMCA. Why don't we just move them, move them around?
We've talked about this in the Streets Committee a couple of times. I've had a couple of conversations with the director of the YMCA. The original location of the reserved spaces for the county were put in a, for certain area in the lot on purpose because the signposts are going into gravel versus the amasite so that once the signposts come out, there's no damage to the amasite. It was a temporary situation when the red parking permit process went into play. The county requested some help with parking spaces. We did seven in the north lot and three in the south lot at the time. Generally, we didn't see that as a problem. Since the Y, which is the main entity complaining, not, I've gotten other, I have gotten emails or phone calls from patrons of the Y primarily, and of course, we've heard a couple people come in to the meeting, but primarily, you know, their, their concern is that the spaces were not used. Now they are, with people working from home, there is a delay in getting people into the office. Now virtually all those spaces are being used. We're seeing empty spaces in the lot. We see empty spaces on the street. I heard it, you know, a couple times this evening at least, the empty spaces on the street. I, we're not aware of a parking problem where there's no spaces, with the exception of maybe Central Court then, which is a Wednesday. So the committee, and we, we talked about it with the committee, we would still like to do a wait and see, wait to hear about complaints. We're not saying you can't complain or whatever, we're still trying to gather feedback and make a, maybe an improved decision before we do anything else. But it was really about not damaging the amasite. We even looked at other ways.
So people that are handicapped or whatever are gonna have to walk further just because we're worried about amasite?
We never took it, we never took a handicap space away from anybody.
Well, anybody that goes to.
There's a handicap space right in front of the YMCA.
That's one.
The spaces that we put the signs over are no different than the spaces that are 10 feet behind them. And what we're hearing is, is they don't wanna walk an additional 10 feet, Buddy, is what it comes down to.
I'm just, you know, relying, I'm not the.
Well, here's what I, my thing is, is I think we should take the Streets Committee out, Ralph, because we've heard this now so many times. If they wanna put signs in the amasite so that it takes away from the paving in the winter and it, and the water gets down and, and they wanna do that, then that's what we'll do.
First, what they're saying, Buddy, is the spaces at the county is now assigned. The spaces right behind them or in front of them are, are open to the public. So the space length is 10 feet, so the, 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 the additional walking distance would be about five feet.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna tell you, I don't have all the information, I'm just going with the YMCA, told me today, they said, no, we're still trying to get those parking places, and that's the only reason I brought it up.
Let me say this, buddy, the Y had, was, had zero compromise. They wanted all seven spaces gone. And you know, when you were on council, we rented spaces, the Northwest Savings Bank, and they had, those exact same spaces were reserved. And that's what, really, the idea is you re, reutilize them as reserved spaces.
I have no problem, why don't you just let the YMCA say you're not gonna change anything for now?
We didn't, we didn't say that. We said we do a wait and see, but I, I'll get back to the director and let him know.
I said for now, anyway. I said, let's not, they're not changing anything for now.
Right. Buddy, here's, here's a question, here's a question I have from the YMCA. They have a back door to the YMCA and, and if they wanna accommodate their patrons and get them closer to being inside the building, why don't they, or my question would be, how can they accommodate that door to operate for patrons to use it? So they're right inside of it?
Probably a security thing, I don't know. It's probably a security thing, they want everybody to come in one way and not.
Well, it could be, but there, there are other methods to help the patrons out that they don't seem to be talking about, so.
Well, like I said, I've, nothing to me, I was just relying, asking.
If I can just, I'd like to just say, I mean, we, we, we have provided the Y permits so that they can park there from eight o'clock in the morning till one o'clock in the afternoon at a discounted rate. We've worked with them on that, they got, I don't know how many, they, they asked for so many, I think they use about three, three or four per purchase per month. You know, if, if anyone comes up with some better ideas than what we can come up with, we're, we're willing to listen. We're, all we were saying all along is, is that we spent close to $300,000 to fix up that lot and, you know, we are reduced our streets staff, so the whole idea is, is, you know, they don't have to spend hours in that lot working around all those specific individual meters. They can now get in and plow it and get, get in and out in 30 minutes, which was once, you know, a four-hour job. So with reduced staff, you're trying to be more efficient and to go back in and put individual signs back in would just defeat the purposes, the way we, the way we look at it.
How many, as a point of clarification, how many spots were leased to the county in that lot?
Seven.
Seven there and three in the south lot.
Plus there, wasn't there three other spaces over there, Ralph, that made a total?
They're for, yeah, they're for the.
The Masons?
No, it's the, the, uh, Joanna.
They, they own part of the lot.
Oh, okay.
First National owns part of their space.
Okay, all right.
I feel like there's a fair bit of misinformation out there because the numbers bandied about on Facebook are not those numbers.
Melissa, there isn't a day, we look at it every single day, and there hasn't been one day where we haven't seen five to six at a minimum empty spaces.
The, the, the numbers might be higher because they're counting the spaces around the diamond, the eight spaces or so on the diamond, it's thrown into the numbers also.
There is space every day in the south lot, that's where we park, so we can walk to our business on the corner of High and Water, and there is always spaces there.
I wanna offer something that Mr. Johnson brought up at a recent Streets meeting, and that's maybe going back to the county to see what they can do. If Wednesday's one of the busy days, then why can't they use the parking lot from Centercrest? That they, one, you know, one of them's brand new, and then use their county transportation to bring workers down? I mean, even if it's just Wednesday and they do 40 people, that's 40 spaces, that other people, whatever frees up in the county, they, then other folks from the county can park there, but it frees it off the street, and that's a good idea.
That has been offered, but what, that has been discussed, I think, by the Transportation Office. However, it's like, if you're on jury duty, they give you specific places to park and some people choose, well, I'm not gonna walk that far, I'll pay them either, or I'll get a ticket. And, and the same thing happens with that. You offer that service and, and only a few participate, the others go and take up the spaces because they're willing to pay the two or three dollars or whatever it is to, to park conveniently close to the courthouse.
I, I get that, but there's, there's staff in that, in that courthouse that could be directed to park at Centercrest and ride to, ride to county transportation to their work base. Be dropped off, picked up, and just have a roving one there that, you know, goes around. If they, if somebody leave it early and they're parked up there, they can hop, hop in the.
These guys, I have been in on that discussion, I am not, so I.
I don't, I don't know if they'd be willing to work with us, but on the other hand, too, this whole thing with the county has been, it's temporary until we actually see what happens, so come December, we need to make a decision on what we're gonna continue with into 2022.
Well, I think, I think they paid for a year, we did it for a year or so, it'd be next July or June or sometime like that.
But regardless, there's, there's a time limit to.
There was a time limit, but that was kind of based to me on whether or not the lot was completely full. I mean, if it's not full, then, you know.
Then we, yeah.
So.
It's a good idea, though, I think, Randy Scott, because we talked one time. Yeah, we talked one time with the county about using the CVS lot down there, but they all complained about having to walk up the hill, so that didn't work out either.
Believe it or not, that, that lot is pretty full now. I mean, that, that lot's utilized a lot.
So shall we move on?
Yes.
Okay.
I got one more, I got one thing for old business. I attended the public meeting for the grant program last week. There was three of us there. So Belfort gets 116,977 dollars, and that's for the Streetscape Safety Improvements Administration.
We'll take it.
Hundred and sixteen minus twenty.
Yeah, whatever that's.
Twenty percent.
That must be your cut.
It's the county's cut, Randy.
Okay. Anything else for old business? Okay, moving on to new business.
We have listed the Spring Creek Watershed Commission resolution that was talked about in the work session. Council could consider a motion to accept or reject or meditate with this, and this sounds like we're having the same presentation at the authority meeting, if there was talk about having the authority at least have some input.
So I guess, based on that earlier conversation, I think the best, that's where I was headed.
Now, what do you wanna give a date for it, you want the second, second meeting in August?
September 7th.
Also, yeah.
I think we're looking at the first meeting in September, we put this on the.
That way, the public has a chance to, CNET gets it out, where they make a clip of that piece, put it on our website, people can look at it and make comments, send it back, and that'll give them a full month.
Yeah.
Yep. That's my motion.
Brackville.
Okay, Brackville?
I'll second to Clayton.
Brackville and Clayton. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of tabling this until September 7th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved. Anything else? Any further public comments? Motion to adjourn.
So move, Brackville.
The council president made the motion to adjourn?
Oh, good question.
I said, who's made the motion to adjourn? He made the motion. Brackville made the motion, but no one has seconded it.
I gotta leave this.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Brackville and Eaton at nine twenty-one.
Nine eighteen, or nine eighteen.
My watch is nine twenty.
Well, these ones, these are. You can pick whatever number you want, Linda. Thank you.